Can I get a motion to open tonight's business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on here, just.
We are using board docs for the second time, so again, we will be going a little slow.
This as we do the pledge of allegiance before we convene to executive session.
Yes, but first you're gonna vote. Do you have a vote on, in front of you yet? No?
No.
Do we still have to get it?
Oh, we see it here.
Yeah.
That's a good thought.
Yeah, convene from executive session, I do the pledge.
I'm pretty excited.
I mean, now when you see the vote, is that at it?
Up, and then I restarted it.
Me too.
No, okay. I don't see the vote.
I see it.
Yeah.
Okay, the meeting was unanimously called to order. It's also been brought to our attention that we're gonna hold off on the pledge of allegiance until the close of executive session. So at this point, can I get a motion to convene to the proposed executive session to discuss policy with the school attorney?
So moved.
Second.
All those wait for your computer.
It's our bad, just a little slow.
That's in line. Did you have to open, did you vote?
I voted on the left.
You gonna do the pledge first, or you gonna?
No, we're gonna do the pledge in public.
Okay. Okay, so who mo- who motioned?
I did.
Chris Tice and Second.
Diana.
Diana, and then she's going to vote. Okay, everybody's voted? I'm gonna close the voting. You have unanimous.
Okay, the board will now convene to executive session and return in thirty minutes. Can I get a motion to convene from executive session?
Second.
Okay, and we are utilizing board docs, so our voting might be a little slow tonight. We apologize. We are getting up to speed. So we will be voting online. The results will come up on the screen.
Wow, cool.
So all those in who want to vote, please cast your votes.
Like Ryan Seacrest.
I want a golden buzzer, right? Send them through.
January five. So I have all the voting. I'm gonna close the voting.
Okay. Okay, can we, um. Um, can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So we're gonna move into public input one. Is there anyone here who would like to speak under public input one? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. Uh, then we will move into the superintendent's reports. As a reminder, our meetings do follow Robert's rules, so I'm going to remind the members not to interrupt the speaker, hold all questions until after this, oh yeah, the speaker is finished, and if there is a clarification question, you may request a point of information.
Okay. Well, this is superintendent's report. I'm putting myself first before the principals. I'm sure that they're probably relieved to have me do a little bit of the talking. The first thing I'd like to do is welcome Dr. Carleen Myers. For me, sorry. Uh, she's our new director of pupil personnel services. We're happy to have Barbara Beckerman stay a little bit longer to help show you a little bit about our families and introduce you around. But Carleen doesn't need that much introduction since she spent much of her youth here in Sag Harbor and has come back again. I think your parents also joined you here for your moving in process. She goes, "I'm getting a lot of company." She's living here in Sag Harbor. I said, "We'll get used to that." So we're so fortunate to have her here. She brings with her a wealth of experience from Rochester City Schools, also Westchester, and even my brief moments getting to talk to her today, it was just such a wonderful, knowing that we have someone who cares so much about our fragile learners, but also wants to help the districts because, you know, a high tide raises all ships. So if we help our fragile learners, all of our students do so much better. And she, I think, is just gonna blend in so beautifully with our team. So I'm gonna start with our goals that we did. We met together on July tenth, and we came together with our Board of Education, our educational leaders, what I lovingly call our cabinet. We had our PTSA leader and a student that came and helped us set our goals. It was a good meeting because we really, what I tried to do, I facilitated the meetings, I tried to get us to kind of look at the goals for the last three years and kind of say, are we, have we done, are we done with that goal? Are we doing that goal, or do we have more to do? But we also watched a little inspirational TED Talk, and it was by an educational researcher by the name of Margaret Heffernan. And if you get the chance to watch this, if you're watching from home, please Google Margaret Heffernan and name is, it's time, why is it time to forget the pecking order? And as we watched this, to warm us up a little bit, folks wrote down at their respective tables, and each table had board members and administrators and others at the table. They would write on post-it note what we call word splashes, which were words that resonated with them about supporting Sag Harbor School's success. So as they were watching the video, let me start again, 'cause I talk fast, is what were words that they heard that they said, "Hmm, that really resonates with me." That's a word that really supports Sag Harbor School's success. And she was talking about where are places where people have been incredibly successful and why we've researched them. And this is our word splash that came out. And the words that are bigger are the words that people repeatedly said, and this was board members, and this was our administrators, and this was our student and our PTSA. And the word that came through loud and clear, here's the big ones, were helpfulness, empathy, social, and I think that was social justice, sensitivity, connections, courage, support, joy, trust, diverse. I just thought, isn't that really something? And we have motivate and no, productivity, cooperation, everybody, everyone. They had, the woman that was doing the presentation talked about bricks and mortar, making sure you have the best bricks and mortar. And I just thought that that was really telling of what, that we really brought our hearts into the, into our goal setting. So, the goal setting. This was last year's goals, and we got down deep, and I put those in front of the board members tonight. And again, this has not been adopted. I'm just talking about these right now. And then what I did is I highlighted where we're, where we amended those goals, because I was putting some of my leadership and vision towards the board and towards our administrators going, "Let's not do any more goals. Let's just keep with the task we have," because we have been very initiative-heavy in this district over the last four years, this is my fifth year in the district, and making sure we tie up what we've already started and do it really well. So when we did the post-it notes as we exited, we did see that, and I shared that with the boards, where we saw dots. And so, and of course, I'll take lots of feedback from the board. So we went from, one of the big changes was that we established a subcommittee on diversity inclusion, and we have heard across the state and across our nation that we're, that this has become a very important element in local communities, in our state community, and across nationally. We've sent a number of our committee members out to these trainings, workshops. Our assistant principal just came back from a statewide, our New York State superintendent's gathered in Cornell in Ithaca, and they called it diversity inclusion and excellence. So I inserted the word excellence in there. And when they ended the year, the diversity inclusion committee, they spent the year meeting with who were our safe partners. So our safe partners included the John Jermaine Library, CME, the Ola. So those were some of the partnerships, 'cause we can't do this alone. And what, one of the things they asked of the board for a goal was, would the board consider taking them from a subcommittee to a true committee with their own charter? So that's one of the changes for the board goals. Another was that we have, we have set up a transportation committee. Now we have to hear their recommendations. I know we have a piece left, and I know Mr. Malone will talk about that, but we, they hired a transportation consultant, and that transportation consultant has done a tremendous amount of data gathering, but he still has to this fall meet with the transportation committee. And then we have to start hearing back their recommendations. So they have the data, they have the thought, 'cause they met routinely throughout the year, but now they have to kind of merge those two things and start making recommendations to the board. Then we also had the task of continue to grow emotional and mental wellness programs and curriculum throughout. And I felt what I was hearing from, from the feedback we got was, we now have to measure, focus on measuring and monitoring that wellness, like how are we doing as we go along? Then if we go down to raise district accountability to promote student achievement, one of the second tasks was develop and implement a middle-years plant program. So last year's was implementing the IB middle-years, and we found that through a number of presentations to the board, that was, that was not the direction the district administrators wanted to go in. They felt like they could do a better job in-house because of how unique Sag Harbor Schools is. And our leadership brought the teachers on board that were working with them, and this summer, they are writing the curriculum for that plant program and are going to implement that this year. So that's an exciting factor. And then the other one in yellow for that was to implement the revised district fundraising policy and implement a revised guidelines for students and advisors to develop successful fundraising plans. As a matter of fact, I had the opportunity to meet with the leadership of the student council today with Mr. Nichols, and they're very interested in being part of Board of Education. They understand it'll happen, 'cause they're probably the busiest students in the school district, but if they can each take, you know, turns, they, but they wanna bring it to the whole student council, because they're just part of it. So they wanna bring it to the whole student council, and they also, the whole student council is very interested in having their, we're sending it in a Google Docs to them so that they can have a part with the fundraising policy or the fundraising protocols and the policy that you guys developed. So they were, I think you've got a great group of leaders coming on, and I think they, they're really strong. So the number three was successful implementation of the 2013 bond proposal, Proposition Two regarding the elementary field, the multipurpose court, and the surfaces in the 2013. So back in 2013, we voted on a synthetic turf field. That was later changed, and it was a grass field, which if you look out there tonight, it rained a lot, and I was like, "No, I don't want you on there. It rained tonight," but it's holding up beautifully, and they're all playing. We let it rest for the month of July. And so with the funds that were left over, the elementary's been a very busy place, and our summer school students learned all about big machinery this summer. They put it into their curriculum. And we have, they've been working on the multipurpose court is laid, they're working on the new grass field there, and we've, we'll see pictures of the, the new plaza that's been completed. That also, there's a lot of monitoring, making sure that field grows in a nice, healthy manner, just like we did with this grass field. Finally, develop and communicate a plan for the former Stellamaris School to enhance opportunities for students and their community. We have to name Stellamaris, and we have to do that with getting input from the community. We plan to start that towards the end of September, putting out postcards to the community, letting them know that there's a survey that will be on our website. And then we'll also have, we changed it, 'cause we, the PPS offices, the district offices, moving down to Stellamaris, and we'll continue to identify revenue. Now one of the revenue streams will be, that will be leasing space to a daycare provider, but of course, we wanna continue to identify other leased spaces. Okay, any questions on that?
Is this the opportunity to discuss whether we think there should be changes, or is that another time?
We will be voting on the goals at the next, the twenty ten, twenty seventh meeting.
Can I give me feedback?
So we have feedback and questions now, and we can also discuss later as well.
Yep.
Just had a quick question. That middle-years plant program, when is that?
So the plant program starts next this year.
Right, that's great.
It alternates with music, and they've, Mr. Rainey, Ms. Westoff, and Mr. Maya have already started the curriculum, and there's a part about digital citizenship, there's a part about empathy, there's a part about learning how to learn, which is the TOK tenants from the IB, so it's pretty cool what's going on curriculum-wise. I'm excited about it.
So we can have them share that with, with the Board of Education. It's really, they've done a great job. Yep, they've been really excited about it.
I just wanted to say that I, I think that this is, this is really nice. I, I get the fact that it takes a long time to implement something well, and we had a lot on our plate for the last few years, and there's a lot of things on this list that we still are working towards. So I like the fact that it's, we're continuing to work towards those big, the big things.
They're really, they're really big things. One of the things that I do have to get, I have to take a red pen for myself, is that I, it wasn't clear enough that security continued, the softening and strengthening of security that we talked about is going to be very important throughout, forever, for the, for the rest of our. That we're operationalizing that. Yes. So, but I think it really needs to be red-penned right in there, so that our, our families know that the strengthening and softening of security will be front and center for Sag Harbor forever, you know? But especially in the next couple of years, the work we'll be doing on the radios, and we hired another security guard full-time with that work. You know, Matt's gonna be going next week to a forum on safety and security with one of our security guards to bring back more information, so that, that's on the line.
I just wanna clarify. We had talked about the softening of security and how that's also going to be applicable to our mental health awareness prong, which is also a part of the wellness initiative that was passed a few years ago.
Right, right. So like, for example, in the plant program, they've made it just content-specific, that during the middle-years program, like we're doing mindful Mondays, and we're, we're putting it, it's not just like a hit or miss, like a one-time speaker. We're making it part of the curriculum, part of the work that they do. It's, like now, it's, you know, it's, we're making it so framed right in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I completely embrace the idea of multi-year goals, because, you know, the stuff that's worth doing usually takes multi-year. My, my kind of one concern about how this is structured is that some of it's very general, so one, we will not know whether we've achieved it or not, and two, the delivery dates are so broad that, you know, ongoing could mean, like, you know, some of them are very broad and say ongoing, so how do you know if you've achieved what you should have this year on that, contributing towards the bigger goal? So I would, because the, the most successful goal-oriented organizations are the one where clear goals, clear deliverables, clear dates, and then you know whether you've achieved it or not, or you adjust and then, and modify. So I'm, I'm, I would really suggest that before we vote on these, that we create a little more structure around them, knowing that there are times when you may miss it, but at least you know what you're shooting for. Otherwise, it's, to me, this is way too squishy, the way it's structured. And then, just secondly, I know that the, you know, one of the things that we've increased our resources on recently is towards communication. You know, we've had, we're building people as, you know, who are now getting compensated, and then our district clerk is now getting compensated for it. And we know that, that we have some fragile areas of communication, so I would love to see whether, you know, were we doing, you know, were we doing our website, or whatever we're gonna call it this year, there's some other things we're implementing, and we're can, you know, I, I would like to see that as a goal of just saying, 'cause if we're gonna do it anyway, at least have some structure around it, and be able to define what it is, why we're, you know, why we're investing these resources, and what, what a successful outcome looks like.
Right. I agree on that, and I believe we have discussed about when the administrators and you guys do your presentations, specifically stating what goal this presentation goes
That's gonna be on board docs, so it's gonna be, there's gonna be linkage on those. Yep. And one of the things we, because two and four, we do have ongoing, where we have a deadline, but we have report dates in November, January, and then in the spring, which I think we've had pretty good fidelity on for the last four years on reporting. So we do give reports on them, because we have to be very careful when it has to do with, probably not as much with two, but on four, and we could stay with Stellamaris, we're at the, we're at the, we're under, you know, we're under state ed swim.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking more of two, like, for instance, decide how we, we will measure current and postgraduate student success. We had that last year, and it said ongoing. Well, did we achieve it or not, and what does achieving that look like? So, and there may be multiple components, but I think it's, I, I think the better approach is to say, for this year, if we do this component of that, then that's a step getting us to the final goal. So otherwise, again, I just, it's just too squishy.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that point, Chris. I know we had a discussion on how to measure graduate success rates, and that turned into a whole follow-up of technology and a whole slew of reporting processes that I think every.
School has difficulty with, following the graduate?
Yeah, I use that as an example, but I'm just saying that, you know, all these, you say ongoing, but what does success look like? How do you know if you cross that finish line for this year's efforts towards that goal? That's, that's what successful goal creating is.
Does anyone have any further questions?
Okay, thank you.
I have more.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
You're off the agenda.
I'm on the agenda tonight. You know, the administrators will take over in another month. They'll be doing data and that kind of thing. So I'm just gonna just give some highlights of the residency policy, because this is just a first read. So anyone who's out there in the community watching, you may see changes in this before it's adopted by the board, because the board needs to look and have conversation around, around policy. So I'm just gonna go through the highlights, and what, I wrote some notes to myself, that we are looking for, when the attorneys and I were working on this, and Dr. Kenter was pulling many examples from across the state. We tried to pull examples from, from school districts that, that looked and felt a little like Sag Harbor. Sag Harbor is a wonderful, small school district. People really cherish public education here in Sag Harbor. They, they like their children coming here. If they are forced to move, they really wanna try and maintain coming here. They'll work hard to do that. So we had to develop a strong residency policy. Our other policy was fairly short and brief, so we wanted to have, we wanted to have clarity, what I call clarity, flow, and implementation shown throughout. So for clarity, we have school policy, we have federal and state policies integrated. We have some things put in there for two families. So if families going through a separation for a time, and the mother or father has to move out of district, we had that clearly defined for the families. These were questions that really kept people up at night, so we wanted to kind of give them that clarity. We've had a number of state laws and federal laws have changed, because they do realize that families are sometimes very fragile in their housing, and we see a lot of fragile housing out here. So those things have been interpreted, taken from state ed, taken from federal laws, and been placed in directly from those guidance documents into this. So for example, in the past, we had to say, "You have to show two or three of these items, period." No, now our state, state ed laws say, "No, the commissioner said you can't do that anymore, but you do have to prove your residency." So that's one of the first things I have on here, is that residency defines what is residency, and then what does it look like legally. So we define what residency is, and then we say what it looks like legally. And then we provide lots of documentation on what the process looks like, and here's all the examples of the ways that you're gonna prove residency, because you have to live in Sag Harbor School District to stay in Sag Harbor Schools. We're saying that clearly from the Board of Education. We're saying that clearly from the administration. We've, we've had enough people that are so concerned about that that we took the time this summer to develop what I think is going to be a very strong residency policy. The other piece that we did was the flow, so that you can see it on the website. We will have all of the forms on the website. We will say that you will get support if you, which say that now requires, if you struggle with English language learning, if you struggle with your housing, here's the ways you can prove you are a resident, because you have to be a resident of this community to attend Sag Harbor Schools. And finally, implementation. How do you prove that you're a resident of Sag Harbor Schools? So for example, people may have multiple houses, but your house has to be in Sag Harbor. You have to reside in that house. You have to be able to prove you reside in that house. It's not good enough that you just own a house in Sag Harbor. You have to reside in that house, and here's what that looks like. And finally, and also having what the forms look like. And finally, that if you decide to try and come to Sag Harbor when you don't reside here, there will be consequences. If we find that out, you will have to then pay tuition for the time period that you try to, you know, use the system. So if you leave Sag Harbor, don't continue to have your children stay in Sag Harbor. We did put some softening in there, though, because we do understand there are families that come the month of June have to rent their house. So we have, after the fourth marking period, you can continue to have your children here in Sag Harbor Schools, because we understand some people, we have heart, have to rent their homes to continue to sustain here in Sag Harbor. So that is also put in there. So there's a harder edge going, if you, if you decide to move out of Sag Harbor and continue sending your children here. If we find out, we're going to charge you back tuition, but we often put some softening language in saying, "If you have to, if you, if you have to move out of your home, because you have to rent it for the month of June, or for after, you know, the end of the fourth marking period, we understand that we're gonna soften that." Okay. It's a lot of talking. So, but again, the board will be able to give input. Our administrators have given a lot of input, but again, I'm very reflective. I think we've got a lot of reflective members that'll, that'll give input along the way, 'cause there's always things we don't think of. I put in yellow. And this will be on the documents that we'll put on the website, so families will take a look at this as well. And one thing about Sag Harbor is we have really good lines of communication. They don't, they're not worried about contacting us and saying, "You know, did you think of this? Did you think of that?" Okay. And I think I'm gonna hand this over unless there's any questions.
Um, I think we'll, we'll give some time for some questions and input briefly. The members have had a chance to review the legal issues with the attorney, and they've read the, they've reviewed the document. This is just a first read, so we'll hold off on a, you know, in-depth discussion, but if anyone has any comments on the issue and the things we discussed. I know for me, one thing I wanna say is that I feel like when we first kind of looked into this, we were actually hoping to tighten up the language. And then in July, state ed actually came down and was like, "No, you actually can't do that. You have to broaden the language a little bit." So I think we're reworking the framework in our minds as well. I also think it's important that this policy actually states, you know, what will happen to you if you do violate it. I think some member of the community kind of just thought it wasn't that big of a deal, "Oh, whatever, we'll just say we're here," kind of thing. Whereas like now, there's actual ramifications, and you may be subject to taxpayer claim for tuition. I think that's a helpful deterrent. Anyone else?
I just wanted, this is a little bit different than the first draft that we saw, so I appreciate the feedback that everybody gave and the edits that took place from the original version to this version. I think it's, we're going in the right direction. It's gonna improve.
I'm just kind of stating the obvious, that the intention of the board is to have a policy so the taxpayers know that the dollars that they're contributing are to educate the children that actually reside in this district, and that our intention as a board is to make sure that the policy is executed as fairly as possible across all parts of our district, and to be fair and equitable.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving on.
So this is sort of old news. I think we went over this at the meeting on the thirteenth. It's the summary of the end of the year, the region's assessments moving up, eighth grade moving up, high school graduation, which was the twenty-third. The majority of our summer, in terms of updates. The majority of our summer in terms of updates is really spent looking at our staffing needs and hiring the staff that we need. So we are in the process, almost done actually, with selecting two probationary tenure track candidates in English and math. And we had four leave replacements, two, I believe, in special education, one in math and one in physical education. So we're looking like we're in pretty good shape for next year. In terms of what's happened in addition to that, we had a summer enrichment workshop. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Ms. Carriero?
So Mr. Terry came up with this proposal while talking with Mr. Mott, two of our middle school math teachers, to make sure that we were not allowing kids to have the access to math because they were concerned about trying to get more children to access the eighth grade accelerated algebra. So Mr. Terry's been working with some fragile learners, with also some advanced learners to help them out, and it's been going really well. The attendance is like usually between five to 15 per session, and it's good because it's a drop-in, so every day something different.
The, Ms. Mott has a college application workshop scheduled for the 20th and 21st. The Common Application, which is the application that students use to apply to the majority of their schools, is already open, so kids, students are free to start to work on that. The essay prompts are the same as they were last year, which is a good thing. They didn't really change it up. So the timeline for most college, for most seniors this year is they start working on their Common App in and around now. Those students who want to apply early decision to a school, those deadlines are usually between October 15th and November 15th. And those students who decide not to apply early decision but go regular decision, they're trying to complete their applications by mid-November. So this is a very busy time for college applications, and it will begin in earnest on the 20th and 21st. And we'll have similar workshops once school is in session. Middle school summer orientation, that's the 21st, and Ms. Carriero has organized that. Mr. Malone has organized some ABA training through, what is it, Developmental Disabilities Institute? And that's open to all staff, K through 12. New teacher orientation, which Ms. Graves has organized, is the 29th and 30th. First day with staff the 4th and the first day for students the 5th. Any questions?
Just one question. Doesn't quite relate to this, but usually in August, I think we get a presentation on test scores. Is that for the next meeting? Because the next meeting's in education.
We have a problem, yeah.
Have you still waited?
No, we're still waiting.
Are you still waiting? All right. Because in the past, it was earlier because I remember we used to get it-
Last year was early August, and this year we're still waiting.
You're still waiting? Okay, so I guess you have to get them first, huh?
Well, certainly, because we have, yeah, we have the AP, the IB data and the, the region's assessments, which are grades eight through 12, but we don't have the three through eight assessments.
So will we wait for the, for the three through eight before we do all of it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And the projections are actually early October.
Oh, my gosh.
Some delay, I'd say that.
But as it relates to planning for next year, the region's assessments, IB and AP assessments are used in shuffling staff around.
Okay.
And also deciding what professional development needs to take place. So we have looked at those numbers.
So you're using the data anyway, you've been sharing. One other question, I don't know who it would go to, but I would ask whether, in the goals we talked about some of the, the middle school because of the, we're not doing the IB. If we had done the middle years IB, it would have also been for ninth and 10th grade?
Yeah.
So is there anything different that will happen in ninth and 10th grade this year?
That was, that was not the plan. We didn't do anything for-
Okay.
I think just as a reminder, we had voted against the IB for the middle years.
No, 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 I know. But the presentation was that we would, that they would be implementing some things-
Right.
-in replacement of it. So I just didn't know because we hadn't really heard about those two years. And people forget that the middle years program isn't just middle school, but it's ninth and 10th grade. I didn't know if we were, because we were not doing the middle years program, if we were going to be addressing anything in those two grades.
And I could go into great detail, but I've been over this before. One of the big things that provides the vertical articulation that's necessary is the fact that the teachers of the IB courses are often the teachers of courses in ninth grade and 10th grade. So they're implementing many of the same habits of mind in those courses, ninth and 10th, that are used in 11 and 12, but nothing concrete in terms of a new course like what's happening in grades six through eight.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Nichols, you missed your-
Actually, we haven't had a board meeting since then.
Actually, didn't we show these pictures on the 13th?
There you are.
Okay, so as Mrs. Graves mentioned, we've had an exciting summer at the elementary school with all the construction that's going on. Things have been going very smoothly outside the building, but inside the building, we still ran our summer program. This is an annual program that runs for six weeks at the elementary school for students entering grades one up to grades seven, geared towards children that may need the extended year program as per their individualized education plan, IEP, or students that have been identified by the faculty and staff, as well as parents sometimes that we think would benefit from some extra help in reading, writing, mathematics. We've also extended the program to our English language learners, and they benefit greatly from the program. We ran three classes this summer, about 40 some odd students. This is Mr. Martin. He taught our third and fourth grade class. And I think you'll see by some of the pictures, the teachers follow a thematic study, you know, depending on the age level. This is our younger group, learned all about butterflies and metamorphosis. We actually, we're still able to get out into the gardens, which was nice. The construction crew understood that we still needed to make use of the space, and Marcus helped us out by getting the kids out there when needed. So that was great. These guys did a study of immigration, Liberty Diner, they wrote a story. You can see our statues of liberty there. And we, we actually wrapped things up on Friday. We did a little barbecue to send the kids off for the rest of their summer break. And then our upcoming events, Mr. Nichols actually gave me credit for organizing the faculty and staff training, but that was Mrs. Graves. But thank you, Mrs. Graves. So it's on the, on the 27th and 28th. We will have our new, new teacher orientation on the 29th and 30th. This summer, we were in the hiring process, looking for a general education teacher. It will be a new teacher that will be appointed this evening, assuming first grade position. I'll let Mrs. Graves introduce her shortly. And then our first day for faculty and staff, the 4th. That afternoon, we, we offered another orientation program for new students that are joining the summer, maybe completed the registration process sometime in June or July and maybe missed out on our moving up day, which occurs at the elementary school at the end of June. On the 5th, our students arrive, and on that same day, our pre- phase students have a meet and greet, a short orientation program, and then they begin on the following day, the 6th, which is a Thursday. And then a week later, on the 14th, which is a Friday, we do our back-to-school picnic, our annual event to celebrate the start of a new school year. So we're looking forward to another great school year at the elementary school. Any, any questions?
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Malone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Silver?
It's been a fun summer, been busy. So I'm going to give you a couple of little snapshots of what's been taking place. Over at Stella Maris, we did the abatement of asbestos, floor tile, asbestos pipe wrapping, as well as mastic. J.C. Broderick is our environmental consultants. They were on site doing air monitoring, so, and monitoring the whole removal and disposal of the asbestos. Rand Services was the, our hired contractor to go in there and take care of that. And we finished today, by the way, which is pretty good. This, just a couple of shots, before and afters. That's the hallway going down upstairs. Obviously, there's no more floor tile, just a big mess with, you know, equipment. This is one of the offices upstairs as well. Those are air scrubbers, those tubes that are coming out of the windows. It's just to give you an idea of what we've been doing. They've been scrubbing the airs in the space. That's a sensor at the left. Looks like a microphone, but it's not. Collects air samples. Now we're over at Mr. Malone's building. This has been a great project. The contractors have been really, you know, working great with us. The kids were wonderful this summer, giving lemonade out and doing funny stuff, right? That's right. So Quintel Contractor mobilized on just June 25th. They started the demo to the multipurpose court first. They also started doing the drainage pools simultaneously, you know, around the field, plaza, as well as the multipurpose court.
Can we just go back one second?
Sure, yeah.
What is that?
Those are drainage pools, which on the left. Yeah, so, yeah, it's a drainage pool. So everything runs to those, those wells. And then from there, it leaches into the-
So it doesn't get over flooded?
There you go.
And ruin the new grass with that?
We don't want it to. Nope. This is a little before and after of, you know, the demo. So we had this old asphalt there. We did uncover a couple of little dry wells that no one knew about, surprisingly. I guess there's been a house there, many, many years ago. Demo of the front plaza. I gotta tell you, the safety has been great. Steve McLaughlin has been doing a great job for us. Mr. Malone and his staff has been great, and the contractors really been safeing off the areas and making it really safe for everybody. So it's been really good. This is laying of the, that's the rebar to the left they formed out, and they started pouring slabs at the plaza. Now, this is very critical because we want to make sure this is walkable so when the buses arrive that we can get to the building, right? That is almost the finished product. Today, we poured, we beat the rain. The concrete did set up this morning. I'll let you know more tomorrow. But everything looked great. I mean, there was that one little section in the back, but everything else was poured prior to that, and we're real happy about it, so. This is the walkway that goes to Hampton Street. Okay, we removed the bricks because they were sinking, they were causing voids and really causing a problem. So we pulled the bricks and we poured concrete. We did save the dedicated bricks. We are still working on a plan for them, so we just need a little more time to come up with what we're going to do with them. We did save all of them. That's the field. Right now, we're in the grading mode. We removed a lot of earth and we reduced the slope that, I don't know if you're familiar with the elementary school going towards the building?
We have questions.
And that's all I have for that. Does anybody have any questions?
I did. First of all, thank you for that. We've been very, very busy this summer, so thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like a lot of great stuff's getting done. I noticed, at an upcoming meeting, can we get an update on the calendar for Stella Maris? The last update on the website, you know, the Stella Maris section is from December of 2017.
Yes.
So if someone clicked on that and looked at the calendar, they're going to look at these dates. So if these are not the dates anymore, just so that we're being really transparent with the public, you know, I don't know why things haven't been updated in seven, eight months there, but I would really encourage us to even have a snapshot. Instead of these dates, these are the new dates so that the public knows.
Okay, great, yeah. We do have some, you know, some upcoming news, which is good. We are ahead, well, no, we're not ahead. We, but we're in the review stage right now at SED, which is great news. The architects, I did talk to them this morning, they did say that we are looking to put this out to bid in September and start construction in October. I know that's pretty vague windows, but that's, if everything keeps on moving the way it's going, that's, that's our path right now.
So that, I think that's helpful for the public to know. So if we're, based on that compared to what we have published, it's about a four-month difference? Does that push everything back four months?
Well, just talking about the architects, we're, I don't want to say that we are, we are behind, but I think we could gain some time.
I think the issue has to do a lot with-
January, what people do in January.
We're also at the mercy of state ed. I remember their-
No, no.
-original, their original date was like, oh, we'll be able to do it in like fourteen months.
Sure.
Then it came down, and the architects were like, no, they, the waitlist was up to like 36 months or something.
They took longer and we submitted late. So it was a combination of those two things, but I'm just wondering, because we have families who are planning for next year-
Sure.
And, you know, we went out saying we anticipate the building turnover to the district for final prep, December 2018. It was going to open January 2019 for the second half of the year. So I'm just thinking, if we really don't think that's a possibility, then I could, you know, the sooner people know, the better.
Well, I think we might, one of the, there's, there's pros and cons to both. We, you know, I think we should just take down the dates because we are looking within days possibly of hearing from state ed when we will have an authentic timeline.
Okay.
A positive to all this, though, is, is the approval, had it come back in June, we would have been getting bids and starting construction in July. And it probably would have been much more costly, having had the heat wave we've had.
Right.
Because everyone downtown has told me they've had the busiest summer they've ever known, and we, it probably would have cost us more.
Right.
So starting construction in October, when, at least it was school districts, the contractors that work for school districts, they are not as busy in October, and they're much more hungry.
Right.
So that actually may work towards us, and it may not alter the timeline.
Oh, good.
So, but it's, you know, anything we put on there, like I said, I think at the last board meeting, it's so, it's like tentative timeline.
You know, I understand that. So I'm just saying that the only thing that the public has to go by right now when they go online is, is things that we know are wrong.
Okay.
So even if, you know, this has been, right, and then we'll have another update, we anticipate another update within the next month, or just something so that it's really clear. That's all.
No problem.
Because I know you guys are working really hard on it.
So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. The athletics update is, there's some past dates that we have on the, on the board there. We were able to, as you'll see in the next slide where it says we conducted sports physicals in June. Nurse Comer was able to secure another date in August, which is something that's traditionally been done in the school district. Again, we had our athletic awards, and we closed out the year with a, with a series of sports physicals. The athletic year starts 45 minutes ago this year. So football practice started over at Southampton 45 minutes ago. And our, our biggest date for rollout this year will be, again, this is put into rest last year, our biggest date will be the 20th, where we'll have our, we'll have our physicals as well as we'll have the start of JV and varsity sports for the fall. You can see there's a lot, I believe we offered six, six opportunities for females and four for the boys, or five for the boys. And the modified, the middle school dates, so the middle school dates will start on the first day of school. And traditionally, what we've done, and we'll do it again this year, is the first practice will be a meeting with the entirety of the players, coaches, and parents. So everybody starts the, the year off on the right foot, and everybody's on the same page about what they need to expect from middle school sports. And there's a lot of excitement moving forward going into this year. We have our homecoming date is on the 21st. Mr. Nichols and I met with the PTSA, some representatives from the PTSA, and I know that the planning is underway, and it's going to be a fabulous fall for the wellers.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No, you can go.
First thing I want to talk about is board docs. Obviously, we're using board docs, everybody's aware of it, but we don't need to go into all the details about that. But I did want to mention that we are working with board docs so that we can go back and bring the previous year's information from the website directly into board docs. So we will no longer have it residing on the website, but it will be there. And we're going to start with the most recent year and work our way backwards from there. So that's a process that's, that's underway at this point now. The other side of things, been working very hard on this for months now, and we're getting to the point where we're almost ready to, to launch the new site. Bear with me here a moment. All of them work the way they're supposed to. This is-
We'll figure out all this new technology later.
That's our new website?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is what the site looks like at this point. It's very much still a work in progress, but we're making lots of progress with that. So- So this positioning over here will be where the most current and, I guess, most important information, if you will, will be placed. That will be able to be changed quickly in the event of a weather-related cancellation or any other important news. It could be posted there very quickly. This has a gallery section, obviously you can see it, so we can update that with pictures. This live feed is actually one of the main features that we're interested in utilizing this new system for. With this live feed functionality, the administrators, particularly Mrs. Graves, has the ability right from the phone using an app to post updates directly to the website and simultaneously to our social media accounts, all at the same time, if that's the choice that's been made, as well as sending out a text message to, to alert people to information. So rather than going through the process now where somebody attends an event, they take a bunch of pictures, they send it to me, the next day I finally get them up on the website and put them up, this will be immediate. So we can get information out there very, very quickly. And one of the key things behind this is, again, trying to improve communication. So we can get the information to the public as quickly as possible. There'll be a section here for news as well, just like we've seen on other pages or on our current site. This events section's a little bit different also than the one we have now in that it's more of a text-driven page, and that's by design. Ideally, we'd like to get many people using our app. So down at the bottom of the website, there'll be the ability to download the app. And the reason for the app is that the website is, is written in a streamlined fashion so that the information that appears on the phone appears much more quickly. Because the feedback that we've received from various vendors is that the majority of people, maybe not here, but the majority of people are receiving their information on their phones now. And they want it to load quickly. And the more we load it down with heavy graphics-based pages, the slower the response time is and the less likely people are to review the information. So this also gives us greater flexibility. For example, all of this calendar information can just be entered through a Google Calendar and it just gets posted directly to the website. So any one of us who has access to the calendar can make a quick change. You know, tonight we have to change a time on something and it can be done very, very quickly. So it's a much faster process for updating information. There'll be separate sites for the main district site, the high school, the middle school, the elementary school. And there's also a site specifically for athletics. And we haven't set this up yet and gone into full features. We're gonna be working on that over the next week or so with the athletics department, where you'll actually be able to see all the schedules of upcoming events, the location of the upcoming competition, and also the updated score, which will all be able to be done remotely. And also, as Eric's at an event, as we all know, he loves to post to social media, which is wonderful. We also have the live feed page on the athletics page. No, no, that's a compliment, seriously. But we'll have it also on a page so that you'll be able in one click to post it to the website, to the social media, all simultaneously, and real-time score updates. This will be easier for people to find information on the schedules. We have a schedule change, which often happens very late in the day with the weather and so forth. Section eleven site, no matter how many improvements they've made to it, it's still not an easy site to use. This will be much easier and it'll be faster and simpler for parents to find the information.
So does that replace this thing that we have on our phones now?
That one is the old app. Yeah, we have a whole new app for it now.
So if I'm gonna log on to a computer, I'm gonna see the same thing?
You're gonna see exactly what you're seeing up here.
So if I'm on the high school site, because I know right now there's a section for parents or students, when you click on it and you see almost all the resources you want, is that gonna still exist?
This is what the high school site looks like. So it's been streamlined somewhat in that there was a lot of redundancy on the old site. So for example, under parent, under student, and under faculty, they all said library. So it kinda looked at it like, that was kinda silly, let's, let's put it all together in one place.
And there's a search function, so if you're looking for something, you can just type it in and get it.
And I've actually been searching a lot to see that it works. And it actually works significantly better.
And it also means that when you're looking for the information in the app, you don't have to turn it all different directions to get the full page.
Correct.
That's what it's really renowned for, is that it's really, it's a phone-based rather than...
Right, but not everybody, not everybody uses their phone when they're looking at...
No, any...
Right.
But it's, but it's...
It'll be in both places.
It'll be in both places, but it's built to be, to load on really fast. So you don't have to sit there and let it spin.
Okay. And one thing I'm rolling out today for the first time, we're looking at this, so there's still changes to be made. Lots of changes, not even up there. Is the communication protocol list? There it is.
Oh, that's nice.
Oh, that's cool.
Which is something I believe you've been looking for in terms of who needs to be contacted with regard to what situation. So the parents know in the event of, you know, a problem with athletics, follow these, this chain of command to get your situation resolved.
And nowhere does it say a board member.
Yes, it does.
It's just a joke, it's just a joke.
Read that there. What's that bottom one say?
Oh, that's nice. I like that.
That's great.
We're rolling that out as well.
That's great.
So we're making, making lots of progress with the site. If all goes well, should be no later than the twenty-seventh that we're actually able to launch. In fact, the message that went out last night, yeah, the upcoming events was actually pointing to the events on this site, not the former site, so.
Do you have any student-staff-parents kind of pressure testing it, just to like...
We have lots of staff pressure testing and working simultaneously on different aspects of it. And I have my student-summer workers that will be putting this through, you know, its test, but we haven't really rolled it out to parents other than employees who are parents.
That's great.
Okay. Okay. Summer tasks, we've had a lot of new equipment arrive. It's all being configured and installed. The Pearson Tech Lab is on target downstairs for the new school year. Brand-new equipment going in down there. The electricians were just here within the last week or so and did their work. So now we need to follow up and run some additional wiring and connectivity. And we should be set with that lab. We're in the process of improving our internet connection. Do this for a couple of reasons. First of all, with the increase of all of the various devices that we're using, we are starting to see a little bit of a slowdown. We still have plenty of connectivity everywhere. But that usage is increasing. And we wanna make sure that we can accommodate everybody and all the different devices. Plus, as we go online with, with another facility, bringing the third facility into the mix, it's, makes sense to increase our bandwidth now from what's considered three hundred megabyte to a full thousand megabyte pipe. So we're going to have much more connectivity out to the internet. I've been working to get fiber connectivity back to Pearson. It's on order. The Pearson facility serves as the network operations center for the entire district. So everything that takes place at the elementary school comes back through here. This is where our internet connection comes in and gets piped across to the elementary school. The same will be true of Stellamaris. So we're going to have fiber connectivity, just as we do to the elementary school. That will go directly from Pearson to the former Stellamaris facility. So we have that on order. And we've also, we're working on the backend equipment that needs to be added to both sides, Pearson and Stellamaris, so that we have full connectivity there as well. Bring this up again and again, sorry, guys. We still haven't found a network administrator to replace Victor. We're having quite a tough time on this. I've actually worked with civil service to change the title a couple of times to try to give us a larger pool of candidates that are qualified. And even after doing that and interviewing multiple candidates, we still don't have a qualified candidate who's willing to accept the job for the price we're willing to pay. So that's unfortunately where we are at right now. The job market itself is very tough in terms of finding people, qualified people. The IT market is very hot right now. But of course, we know the biggest challenge is our location. To get somebody to come, you know, out to the east end is really where people start to look at it and they factor in the amount of time they're going in to be in the car versus the salary. We're just not at a point that we're offering enough to attract qualified people to this. So unfortunately, I think that is something that we're going to have to reconsider in terms of if we're going to get a qualified person, what it requires of us.
So can, can perhaps, we hear from the superintendent at an upcoming meeting, what you recommend so that we can secure someone? Obviously, we need to fill a spot.
Right.
And we don't have tech companies around here to recruit from.
Well, we did, you know, I mean, you bring that up. For a while, we had a company that we're doing business with, a lot of business with for our networking to begin with. And they put somebody here temporarily, but even that person said, no, no, I signed on temporarily. I'm not driving all the way out to Sag Harbor every day. And we've lost that person, so.
He really liked us, though.
Yeah, he did, you know, he wanted to stay. But, you know, you have a couple of challenges. It's, the distance is one, but also people can't afford to live here, you know? If people could afford to live closer, it wouldn't be such an issue. But even that company, when they pulled him back, they don't have an alternative candidate for us because that was our original plan was, okay, we'll, we'll outsource this. But they're not even coming up with suitable candidates for us either. So we're gonna keep looking and we'll come up with a plan of action to that.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Graves, members of the board, fellow colleagues, members of the community, Dr. Philip Ketter, the school business administrator. And tonight, I've got the business department report.
No, no, it's the other one.
We have the black one.
Oh, this one? Okay. So the, the highlight for the month is, as the board knows through the Wednesday letters, I've been keeping you up to date. The Suffolk County Health Department required us to write a very elaborate and complete report to them as to how we intend to provide food service to the elementary school. And this report included all the details of, very, very much operational details, how we're going to prepare the food, transport the food, maintain temperature control, the integrity of the meals, sanitation. So this really required a multifaceted, multi-department-level type of commitment from all this because it included our, our cook manager. It included the administration at the elementary school. It included our transportation supervisor, our facilities administrator. We all had to sit down and figure out how we were going to do this. And included in the logistics was the timing of when we can do this. Because the, we, one of the, one of the things that the health department required us to do is to provide a dedicated vehicle for this purpose. So what we decided to do was take the old 2009 Ford van out of service. Once the new bus, a minibus arrives that we've ordered earlier, I guess we ordered it at the beginning of July. Now I'm thinking about it, and it should be here next month. So when we put the new bus into service, we'll take the van out of service and retrofit that so that we can use that for food transportation. The, the food service department downstairs is going to initially prepare cold box lunch service. And we're going to try this on an experimental basis in conjunction with the administration at the elementary school. And we'll have an initial array of meals that we'll bring there, tentatively three days a week to start. We'll see how it goes. And then we'll proceed from there. So we're looking at an October start for this. And you should be proud of the letter we received from the county of Suffolk because they normally kick back the first three or four proposals and you have to rewrite it, rewrite it, rewrite it. And first shot, they approved it. Your proposal to deliver cold lunches that are prepared and wrapped at the Pearson High School kitchen to the Sag Harbor Elementary School is approved as submitted with no changes. So it was, it was a wonderful effort on everyone's part to accomplish this. So we've got that in the works for October. We're currently underway with our audit with Colin Danowski. So if you can imagine, there's a lot of activity in the business department because we have not yet closed out last year because we're still paying some outstanding bills from 2017, eighteen. We've prepared purchase orders for eighteen, nineteen, and we've implemented that budget. So we're operating with two budgets concurrently. We're also providing our auditors with all that they're asking for, a sampling of the paid bills. They want to see all the audit reports, the bank statements. They wanna, they're sampling all of our vendors and our files, so, our contracts. So they really look at a, an array of everything within the business department. So we're keeping busy and we're on track. And do you have any questions?
That's great. When is it anticipated that we get the report from them? Is that October?
Yes. And then we submit a copy of that to the state controllers office and the state education department.
With regards to the food service for the elementary school, we were talking about Monday, Wednesday, Friday? Is that how?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at initially. And, and it's going to be, we just want to test it to see how it goes.
No, awesome. Thank you. Ms. Carrero, you are up.
Now to fun, tangling stuff with cellphones, obviously. Alright, so as you guys said, to come back with options, we did so. You said three, I did four. Just because I know academic support and lunch are important key factors that the community was holding up on, so I just wanted to make sure we had that. So I'm gonna run through them and then we can do questions. Alright, so the first one, option one, was the one that I think a lot of the community members were wanting, the ones that were very vocal, which is it's mirrored after East Hampton. So pretty much during the instructional time, when the bell rings first period to the end of the day, they need to be out of sight, out of mind, and then the middle school. The irony is that the staff aren't like that's happened. Okay, so, um, we'll make sure to take Mr. Nichols' laptop away. So the, this is the first one. Our first offense, second offense, third offense is exactly what we utilize and we feel like this is actually useful, as well as the consequences. Let me know when I can go. I'm just gonna overview them.
We'll wait till you're, yeah.
Yeah, is that okay? Just 'cause I'm gonna...
We've reviewed them.
Yeah, I don't want, like, we can go through them, but I think if I just do the key points, it's better. So option two is one through nine. Academic support is only when they're allowed for the middle school, so that's six through eight. And then option three is what we have currently right now, which is lunch and academic. And then option four, which is the same as a high school, which is during instructional time it's out, teacher permission granted, then you can use it, but the kids are using it in the hallway and then they're using it at lunch and academic. Alrighty? Those were them, sorry.
Okay, great. Just a reminder, we are gonna have a full debate on the cellphone issue on the August 27th meeting. I do think we have some thoughts we'd like to express or some questions that the board members would like to ask. Alex?
I just want to, again, express my strong support for option one. I just think that smartphones are something that are part of all of our lives now, but there's really no need for middle school students to be having them during the school day. I think it creates a lot of problems. I think it creates liability for the school. And I think this is just a decision that we need to make as a board. And I thank you for putting that together. It's exactly what we asked to be done, but I think it's time for us to make a decision on this. And I think the community wants us to. The only thing that I've heard as to why a student needs a cellphone at school is in the event of an emergency, but I think the East Hampton policy accomplishes that. If there's an emergency, you have your cellphone with you. But I don't think there's any reason to use it any part of this school day. And so I hope we can adopt that, number one, as soon as possible.
Actually, I'm gonna disagree with you on that. I don't like option one, simply because it's still on their person and they can take them with it wherever they want. I think a lot of us have seen the research doing on the side and kind of like almost treating the cellphone as an addiction. So it's almost like creates more anxiety, knowing that like you have it, but you can't use it. So I think there's some research out there for the anxiety sense of it as well. I'm just, you know, my, my thing is that I think that they need to be locked away in their lockers for the day and no access, except...
You want, you want option five, which is stricter than option one?
It'd be option zero, though.
It's numbered by access, so it would be right or point five.
Because it's either no access with access during lunch and, lunch and academic support.
It's no, yeah, it's no, option one's no access, option two's academic. And then option three, yeah.
But, but option two and three, when you say no access, it means it's locked away somewhere else. Option one allows it to have them on their body.
I think all the options are, they just need to be out of sight. Like, I don't think I put the wording in that just because it is something that the parents are buying, right? So yes, we're in school, we don't buy the phones. It's a parent's purchase for their child. So I think there's that liability that I get a little concerned about too. So that, I would rather that child keep it on them than us be in charge of them.
What would you do with the phone?
They should be locked in the, in their lockers.
How would you enforce that?
That's not my problem. They enforce it just like that.
I, I, I.
And I, I don't mean to, so I know that with certain students that we've noticed that they are, for lack of a better word, addicted, you would use for that. We have about four of them per year that drop them off in the office in the morning with me and then pick them up at the end of the day, and it works beautifully. So, I'm happy doing that with certain students especially, and I work it out with the parents one-on-one because it is their possession because they own it. It's like somebody taking my car.
Jordan, you have, uh, Jordan.
So, I, I'm torn about the on the person versus in a locker, because there's clearly like a adminis, like administering, requiring it be in the locker when someone doesn't get to school, with enough time to put it in there, or enforcing it, but I'm also, I, I see, I see your point, January, so I think it's an important issue to, to think about. Also, I think the point that I believe was raised at a prior meeting, that having a cellphone on your person during an emergency is actually creating a bigger risk.
It's more dangerous.
So, that, that's something to keep, to take into consideration. The other thing to bring up is just, is there going to be creep, if, you know, with a more restrictive cellphone policy, are people going to be relying more on smartwatches for texting? So, I think it would be great if we could look into whether the policy should address smartwatches, which is tough because you want people to have Fitbits if they want them, but you don't want them to be able to text people on.
I think that's like an electronic device, if they're on purpose. Because yes, the kids that we do hand in our thing, like, turn it on, do not disturb, because they'll come close to our office and like use their Apple Watch mirror to like text their friend or check Snapchat.
I, I agree with either zero or one. I know, 2006, I'm just gonna mention a few stats because not everybody has read up about this. In 2016, there was a large survey of teenagers and half self-reported they felt addicted to their cellphone. Seventy-eight percent said they checked it at least once an hour. Seventy-two percent of teens felt an urgent need to immediately respond to texts if it's in their back pocket and it's, and it's not ringing, you know what it's doing? Bzz, bzz. And what, what research now shows is that when they either hear it ring or hear or feel a text come in, it creates anxiety and the urge to respond immediately and actually changes their brain, the brain releases dopamine. And so, there's all this research that shows that, that it builds and feeds addiction and that it's a distraction, and although they may say they can multitask, there's research that shows that the ability to multitask with a cellphone is an illusion, with the phone in front of them, students' thinking is fragmented, as is all their work. And so, we kind of think that this is ingrained in the culture and that they can handle it, but research is showing that it is actually a distraction for them to have it, and so that's why I worry about in the back of the phone, I mean, back of the pocket, I mean, we, you know, you have a teenager, you hear their pocket buzzing while you're trying to have a conversation with them, and their arm is twitching because they cannot resist looking, I mean, look at adults, adults have that hard problem. So, I have a, I struggle because I think it's gonna be really hard to enforce it off their person, but we are naive if we think them sitting in the back pocket and buzzing all is not gonna get their anxiety up. And I don't think this is just a middle school problem, I think it's a big high school problem, but that'd be for another day.
Yeah, I agree.
But I think that we have the error on the side of keeping it out of their hands, it is a huge distraction and it creates a lot of anxiety. That's my dissent.
I agree with you, Chris. Diana?
I, I have two process questions. One, this is only for middle school?
Yeah.
Right, we're not looking at high school tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, two, if we put something on the agenda for a, for their meeting, we kinda need to come to some sort of consensus as to which one we'll be voting on at the, at the next meeting, right? Because we're not gonna put all four, it's gonna be a yea or nay vote on one of them. So, we kinda need to kind of flesh out where everybody's leaning tonight so that we can put that on the agenda for a vote on another night.
I know, Susan, not Susan, Susan Lamontaine has sent me her comments, and she agrees that the cellphone should be locked away and not permitted on the person, I believe, all day?
Mm-hmm.
For, and definitely not for lunch.
If, if there's, because you raised a really good issue, if your kid is late for school, they may not be able to get to their locker, I mean, their, their first class could be in the high school if it's Spanish, or it could be in the gym and they can't get to their locker, but maybe instead of it being in their locker, it has to be in their backpack, so it's at least not on their person buzzing in their hip during class.
Diana?
Yeah, so, I just wanted some clarification on those two points. My understanding of the East Hampton policy is that it's out of sight, out of hearing. So, if I hear it buzz, I take it, if I see it in your back pocket, I take it, if I see it or hear it, I take it. So, I think that there'll be an enforcement issue with locking it up. Now, I work with the district where the kids come in before, for, like, all the kids come in and they put them in a closet. I don't think that's practical, thank you. But I do think that if everybody's on the same page, they're not gonna have it on their person if I'll see it in your pocket and then I'll take it, or if it buzzes, I'll take it. So, I think that that'll kind of force them to either put it in their backpack and has to be off because I can't hear it buzz, or in their locker or somewhere else, and then we don't have to worry about, you know, I don't know how you'd enforce whether they actually have it in their bag or in their locker.
But bag or locker.
I think also, another issue that comes up is the fact that some teachers require the phones for their lessons, which I fully don't understand yet, I guess, you know, I don't, I feel like we have enough Chromebooks.
Well, we do have enough Chromebooks, I think it's dependent on the app that they're using.
And, and what if a kid doesn't have a smartphone?
So, if they don't have a smartphone, we use an iPad, it's not that big of a deal, we have them. So, it's, if that's a concern for you guys, and especially for the middle school, we can work with the tech department to figure that out. I know for a Ms. Duff's class with the academic support, she liked having it during academic support, especially for the eighth grade, to upload their work for Rocket Books, so, which was a helpful, useful tool for the students.
I'm, I'm okay with it for academic support, I disagree with it for lunchtime.
Do we, do we have a Chromebook for every student in the middle of the high school?
We have a Chromebook, yes.
For every classroom.
We have more, yes.
We have more Chromebooks than we have students.
Like kids, yes.
They're connected devices, can they access the educational tools that the teachers use?
I, I mean, there's countless tools, so I can't say yes definitively to all of them, most of them probably, and if the teacher has a, a specific need, we can work with them.
You can enable that.
To come up with something, you know, similar, if, if the specific thing they want won't work. But, you know, Ms. Carrie brings up a great point, you know, there is a specific, she has one right now, she's talking about these Rocket Books, and the plan is to roll these out to the entire eighth grade, that's a necessity at that point to have a device, and Chromebooks are not going to suffice for that purpose. So, we have come up with alternatives where we can, but, you know, if we eliminate phones from the entire eighth grade, no, we're not going to be able to successfully utilize that program.
But with regards to the, to the Rocket Book, I have one, and I, you write everything out, you write everything, da-da-da-da-da, and then, like you said, at the end of the day, then you take the snaps.
Right, at the end of the day, absolutely. So, the point I'm making is.
So, it actually limits them, meaning it during class time.
Absolutely. But during academic support, they do, that's when they do it.
That's when they upload.
Any further questions? Oh, well, Alex?
No, I just wanted to say, January, Chris and Jordan, I thought you all made really good points, and I was advocating for the East Hampton one as what I saw to be the most restrictive option, but to the extent there's an option zero that's more restrictive, I, I don't have a problem with that, as long as it's done, and we need to do this before the, the semester is being placed, before the school year starts.
Of course, it would be helpful for me to clarify.
But I just want to clarify that you're telling us that having it off the person is not an option.
Having them off?
Having them locked away.
Locked away, we can do whatever you guys feel comfortable with, it's going to be a, um.
It'll just be an adjustment.
We just have to organize it, we have to sit and figure out how we would do it.
Or it could be backpack or locker.
Or we can do it their academic support person.
I wouldn't do the backpack, because if you did the backpack, then you're gonna run into the whole health issue with kids carrying around their backpacks, because they're gonna have books in them, and in years past, that's been an issue. But if we wanted to put them in the lockers, if that's what you guys decide to do, it would just be an enforcement issue, and there would be a period of adjustment where kids would have to get used to the fact that if they're seen with a phone in the beginning of the day, a teacher would direct them to put it in their locker, they may have to leave class to do so. And after a period of time, if they don't comply with those requests in a reasonable fashion, then ultimately there'll be some discipline, but usually there's a grace period for kids to get used to it.
And we did it already with the sixth grade, when we transitioned it, when we got that fall town hall meeting with the parents, and they were like, no, we, there was too much access to the cellphones because it was the same as the high school, we transitioned it, and the sixth grade team was on board and allowed the kids to walk to their locker to, to him from lunch.
I think what we're, we're seeing is there's a little bit of a, a, a gap with maybe your students' generation versus the younger student generation, whereas you're okay with more access, where I think some of the younger parents are not okay with so much access.
But my kids are older, our mother came with the access either, so I think it's very individual.
Right. And again, we are talking about sixth, seventh, and eighth grade right now. So, do we wanna try and focus on where we're going for the August 28th, 7th meeting, or are we pretty clear?
Yeah, I think option one, and maybe if we tweak the language to just bring some clarity, that's, that's more of a.
I think you're saying with access during academic support.
Well, I think that all of them say something about, like, if the.
Option one's not during academic support, option one's completely.
Yeah, no, option one, but I think, could, would you mind going to option one since that's where we're all kind of leaning?
Well, East Hampton doesn't have academic support at the end of the day, so I, so maybe it needs to be modified to make that available.
But it, but it does say, the only exception to this policy is that a teacher asks students to bring the device for instructional purposes, it's right there.
Right, but academic support.
That's not that one, no, that's.
No, 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 what I'm saying is that if we're, East Hampton wouldn't say academic support, they don't have academic support at the end of the day, but if, if the recommendation, what we're hearing is that during academic support, it will afford children, let's say, to do certain homework or not, I don't know that. I'm hearing in, with Ms. Duff's class, that it's a requirement almost to be able to have access to that.
All eighth grade students, so yeah, during those academics of grade 18, because they use the Rocket Books, they upload and they're used to it.
The meeting on the 27th is one of the, one of the purposes of that meeting, to hear from the community regarding their thoughts.
That was my question.
So, if that's, that's in fact the case, I, I don't know if it, if it, if it's appropriate to narrow it down to one selection prior to that meeting when you're, it sounds as though you want to hear from the community what their thoughts are, and if that's the case, I think putting the options out there so that they can consider all of them and then narrowing it down at that meeting is probably the way to go.
Yeah, I always, I thought we'd hear from more people, I thought we would have more people in the community here tonight.
Yeah, my understanding was that there were a lot of people who wanted to discuss the issue, but.
A lot posted on Facebook and they didn't show up to tell us what they thought.
And so, they may show up.
I, I would recommend that you have one or at most two options that you can vote on at that meeting, because you're gonna have.
We'll cut it down.
I don't think we can do that, from a process standpoint. It's, it's, well, you can't have two, it's a yea or nay. We're gonna have two policies on the agenda.
Yeah, I, it, and it's a, it's a protocol, it's not a policy, but, I keep saying that, but I, my other point is to, I would also, if you're putting something out to the public, have it clearly formatted, so if you're gonna hear their concerns, I think I'm hearing the will of the board, you know, I think I'm hearing that. So, if you're hearing the will of the board, have what the will of the board is, then people can have public input, one, to give their concerns, or their way in that they agree, and, you know, have it scripted, you know, with what your intent is.
But we could have, we could have two and have a public discussion, and then take the will of the board, which one to vote on to move forward on that night.
Yeah, I think it's good if we go forward with two or three options, and then we can just still vote, like, all those in favor of one, yea or nay, you say no, you say no.
We've done that at previous meetings, and the thing is, if, if there's parents who want something more liberal, we'll hear from them that night.
I think that's my concern, we're not hearing from those parents because they're used to the policy being more liberal, because I know that they're very, some people are content with the policy due to a child having anxiety from being apart from their parent, and that cellphones actually have been a helping factor in the transition from elementary to middle, so it's dependent on the kid, which I know seems unoxymoros, evil, but for that family, it's that way.
Well, no matter what the board decides, we're gonna make a, a large minority at least of the community upset, that's kind of the decision, right?
You've always made a good decision when both sides are unhappy. Yeah. The other thing I would interject, though, is I, watching, because I live in middle school along with, with Brittany, is I do, at, at academic support, you do see a lot of reach out, this is my schedule after school today, today, because, you know, whether they're gonna go to that club or that organization or that whatever, and the weather changes, that's when they're reaching out to their parents to come pick me up or, you know, because they don't seem to take the buses.
So, do we want to, do, do we want to put on the table that one of the two options would be that there's access in academic support or no?
That is one of the options, that's number.
That, that's the option that I like. Number two?
That's number two.
Because I like, I like a strict one with, with academic support.
Well, that's number two, but number two, still, they still allow it on the body or in the backpack.
So, we can change that language if that's what you would like, that's just a little.
So, what if we narrowed it to one and two?
And then, with the language that they, or not.
Right.
No, we'll change it to the top language of the other one, which isn't that hard to do. Cut and paste.
I think part of this is, is parental education, so they don't feel like they can text their kids all day while they're at school to have a conversation.
Which decision?
Which happens all the time.
Okay, and maybe we will hear some more input, public input, too, as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a quick break? Um, we are moving into. Consent agenda.
The consent agenda. Shouldn't this go automatically?
So, you're gonna vote on, without pulling anything, you would be voting consent agenda from items 5.1 through 9.10.
Okay, for now, I'm going to keep it the way it is on the agenda.
Yeah. I can, yeah. Downfall, yeah. All right, sorry.
Can we just go back to voting by section, meeting minutes, special education policy actions?
You can't do it by section if you're gonna do consent agenda, it all has to be one unless you want to pull something out. So, the only items that aren't covered under consent agenda are items that you want to pull out.
But we can't do it because of how the technology is set up?
Consent agenda are things that are, are normal recurrence?
Okay, so then consent agendas should not include all the business items, all the personnel actions?
No, they can, they can contain those. The only, the only thing that you want is something that you want to pull out that you're gonna vote differently on.
Okay. So, I am going to ask for a motion to approve items 5.1 through 9.10.
I thought you said 8.10.
No, it's 9.10.
Okay, we're gonna have some items to pull out here.
Okay, just reading off slowly. And going forward, if there's any, anything before you get here that you want, I can really.
Is there a way we can go back and do it by section, the way we used to, like, how it is exactly on the agenda?
No, there's one consent agenda, one.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll figure this out later. As of right now, pull out, did you say Diana?
It's okay, I mean, we don't need to pull out, because we'll still have discussions, correct?
You can still, you can vote, and then you can discuss whichever item you want. The motion, the second, and then you'll discuss whatever you want.
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve items 5.1 through 8.12?
I'm racing right now.
You're so excited. I'm not sure who won that one, so.
I can sit back and let it take its turn, I don't care.
So, I've got Diana motioned, and Chris second?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we're gonna vote. Oh, you want a discussion, go ahead.
Yes. Can we have discussion with regard to yell them out what you want?
8.1?
What about 7.1, we did that.
It's just the read.
Yeah, it's just the read.
I can't.
Oh, 9, 9.1 is coming up separately on my screen.
It says to vote on 9.1.
What?
It says to, to vote on 9.1.
9.10.
9.10.
It's gonna be 9.10 because it's gonna include all of them to the very end, and the last one's 9.10.
Can you close it for just a second, because when it's open on our windows, we can't, we can't scroll or do anything, it makes us stop.
It freezes the screen, thanks, Victoria.
Okay, is there anything for eight point one that needs discussion?
Let me know if it changes.
Not yet.
You can actually exit out of your screen. And then it just, it keeps coming back up, but you can exit out.
The vote keeps coming up.
Yeah, it just keeps coming up.
So I just had a question about the bus routing.
You should be open here.
I was wondering if we knew when the second half of that transportation consultant came? And he did the thing within the mile, and then he was going to do like a part B. And I was wondering what the timeframe was for that, and I actually had several questions, do you want them one at a time?
Yeah, because I think this is going to be a tag team between Mr. Malone and.
Sure.
Sure.
I can answer, I can start to answer that, part one. Our plan was when the school year resumed to get the committee back together, review the part two of the discussion points that came off, which kind of led towards taking a look at the needs here in the district and how they would possibly interface with transportation needs within the village. Some of the big topics have always been on parking and talking about strengthening safety on the roadways around the school. So the consultant thought that discussion around that could help us maybe even come up with a document that could say, help the village with discussions in the future. So in September, October, get the group together, have a discussion with the consultant, and then move forward with that.
So is this bus routes that we're approving tonight the same as last year?
No, this also includes the half, so we went from a mile to a half mile.
Right.
So we rolled over to the new year, and when we rolled over, I think Transfinder, which we do need to help with because we have the software, we pull that mile to a half mile on walk zone now. And so those children and those families that are in, that were, were in a walk zone from a mile, if they're in that mile to one half mile, they're now going to get busing at bus stops. And so they're being contacted now.
If you look at the document, there are like two routes highlighted, and in caps, and I believe those are the new half mile.
I think, I think C, route C, D, and E all have new stops. Right, those are the ones highlighted?
Correct, yes.
I think another question was, has the new family members have been contacted or will be?
Yeah, we have, we have letters going out.
We do.
We do, right.
So for three of the routes, for two of those three routes changed, we have five routes, one is small. But for two of them, the additional stop is the first stop of the day. So does that mean that that's just going to be earlier and everyone else's time is pretty much the same? But for the other one, Route E, where it's near the end, does that mean that all the stops before that are going to be earlier than they used to be? Like, how would parents know?
I don't have that answer.
We do, so during our welcome package, we give out the bus time and bus stop. So they get it every year. The sixth graders get it during orientation, or then we send it out to them. And then the seven through twelve gets it in their welcome package, I'm assuming you do the same.
With a specific time that the student should be at the bus stop.
For each stop, for them, okay, great.
And we also clarify that the first three days of school, there's a lot of photographs happening. So don't count on that time the first three days of school.
Absolutely.
And with regards to the expert's report, is it a possibility that we may see some bus route changes?
So back in, I'm not exactly sure when we reported, maybe it was April, the consultant had looked at the seventeen, eighteen routes and projected placing some of these stops on those routes. So did lend some guidance to Claude in the Transportation Office.
We made him go really fast and make remembers, because we had to give this recommendation to the board.
No, I'm talking about other, other bus routes, not just the new ones, just the whole bus route totality. If he has recommendations that would save money.
Well, I think that's a follow-up question that we would have in the fall. And it would be a good time to have him take a look at how these routes are going with the new ridership.
Okay, do we have any other questions on the bus issue? Okay, then we can go forward and.
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion, any other items?
Just want to thank those that are making contributions and donating to the district, including the University of Michigan and Colmaria. Thank you.
Okay, so for consent agenda, items up five to nine point ten, please cast your votes.
And I wanted to say welcome, by the way, to three new, three new members of our staff. So we're very thrilled you're joining and thank you so much.
Two of them are here tonight, Amanda and Charlie.
And it's their initiation.
Amanda will be teaching first grade this year, and Charlie will be teaching English. So we're so happy to have you. And they're both also locals to the east end, so they won't be doing the big drive, which is all the more reason that they should be doing things after school, which of course that would be shown on.
I actually.
They're like shaving them on camera.
So I'm going to close voting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Close voting.
I'm not showing two people, but I think maybe if I close it, it might show up. Everybody's voting, right?
Everybody's voting.
Yes.
Saying two people aren't present.
One is.
Although I go back to roll call and everybody's present, this vote is telling me that Diana and Jordana are not present.
Do they have to re-read?
Okay, well, to maybe refresh.
I'm going to open it again and just.
Okay, let's try this again, please cast your votes.
Okay, now I have Diana. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to items for discussion. The only item for discussion is the diversity and inclusion committee development. I believe you stated that diversity and inclusion committee has requested that their status be changed from an ad hoc committee to a full-time committee. And also to change the name as well?
Diversity, inclusion, and excellence, yes.
Diversity, inclusion. Okay, I'll start the discussion. I think diversity, inclusion issues are not stagnant, they are constantly evolving. And in order to stay up to date on these critical components that affect all of our students, I believe it's a great committee to help us navigate the future. Anyone else that to discuss whether or not they should become a full-time committee under a new name?
Why are we adding excellence, what was the thinking behind that?
Well, there's, there's two statewide groups that have done it, New York State School Boards and New York State School Superintendents. And they have both, both of them have led with, they call it thought committees. And both thought committees have called it diversity, inclusion, and excellence because they want to tie that in, because you can have diversity, inclusion, but what's the thought behind it? Excellence is that you're leveraging up, right? So that was their thought behind it. So, and Betty's not here tonight, but we, when she went to that committee, she said that was, a couple of the seminars she attended, were talking about what's the why behind all this? And the why behind it is providing excellence for everyone. So I kind of like that in, you know, because, again, it brings us back to the why we're doing this, you know? Is that it's, you know, it's important to kind of flatten what we're doing, you know, so everybody has access.
I went back to the TED Talk we were watching about diversity is what brings you up.
Yeah.
Okay. I agree, I don't have any more.
Any other comments?
Usually with committees, if we're going to start a new one, there's kind of a discussion about what the charter or objective is.
I was going to say, I would like to review the charter.
I think that committee will review their charter, holy cow, so if you want them to report on that. You seem concerned, though.
No, I'm not, I was just saying that it's, you know, I think intuitively it feels right. But, you know, from a process standpoint, you know, we used to have more committees and we narrowed it down. Intuitively, this makes sense to me, but usually it's objective driven and, you know, we're reflecting on more than just, does it feel right? But what would be the objective and initiatives of this?
Well, I can, I'll speak for Betty. One of the things that New York State Department of Education, New York State School Boards, New York State School Superintendents have said is if you don't have a standing committee that's advocating and informing the board regularly on what is happening, like what are your safe partners, what are the initiatives that are happening statewide, what are the best practices? Informing the board and having the board members participate, it doesn't stay a priority. So like, just like you have a, the wellness committee keeps it a priority, keeps it front and center. That this way, that's a recommendation from the thought leaders across New York State, which is your thought leaders from New York State School Boards, your thought leaders from New York State Superintendents, the thought leaders from New York State Department of Education is, we know we have inequities. And New York State is really trying to take a leadership role nationally in keeping, what's, what gets measured is what gets done. So we have to keep measuring this, and we have to keep saying, are we doing it? You know, are we doing these things that are essentially most important? So are we making sure that, you know, we're reading broad books to our children, you know, that, you know, that have people of color in them, that have, you know, like I look around our cabinet, and we have as many females on our cabinet as we do males. We're doing a pretty good job, you know, that, that means something, that, you know, we have people of color in our leadership. These are really important things, and unless you're measuring them and you're keeping them in front of you all the time. So that's why they're advocating that schools, and so that was the advocating of a couple of the workshops and the thought leader conferences that our people on the committee went to. I didn't vote in them, I feel bad about that, but that they went to said, one of the first steps, keep it right in front of your school board, because this is our, you are the leaders, so.
It feels like this committee and the wellness committee may have some overlap at times. And so if there is opportunity for them to collaborate on certain things, I think it would make sense. So for instance, if, and I'm using an example that may not be true, I'm just using it to create an example. But if in the diversity and inclusion committee, they say that this is, you know, they're fragile, there are fragile parts of that population for physical wellness, or emotional wellness, or whatever. I mean, if a wellness committee working on that too, let's, I would just say, let's just try to coordinate, and perhaps the chair of those two committees can make sure that they can leverage together.
Does anyone have any other further comment? Okay, so I think at this point, I'm going to ask.